It is 6:02 PM. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we please have a roll call?
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woolridge.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Gleene.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. ... of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll begin with a call to the public. Call to the public is for comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to place an item on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss nor take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. The first call to the public is Mr. Jerry Rayvert.
My name is Jerry Rayvert and I live in the Machia House on the corner of Church Street and Ruggles. I came here tonight for two reasons. One, I would ask the council in your consent agreement to not vote on the code enforcement manual. I see several things. I've reviewed that manual, the proposed manual, and I see some things lacking as far as protection in the historic district for some of the properties. So I would wish that the council would at least delay that awhile and investigate some of the ideas that I have, things I believe should be included in that manual. The other thing, if you'll give me a second, I'm not as organized as I would like to be, but I'll be as brief as I can. Upcoming in the end of this month is going to be a public hearing on the water increases. And if I read the paper, this was a March 29 paper, at that time, the hearing is going to be May 21st. I don't know what time, it wasn't listed, I have no idea when, but I also know that the council meets on the 21st. And it sounded like after the public hearing, there's going to be a decision on whether you're going to keep the current rate, increase it, or do something else. I would think that you might want to have a second public hearing after presentations are made or comments are made before you make a vote on it. In my understanding with state government, we like to do things on the fiscal year and June 31st is the end of the fiscal year and the new water rates, if they're voted on, would go into effect on July 1st. Goes along with the way government works. I have several questions about the water rates. I'm not at all happy with what we're getting charged right now for water because my wife and I do travel, the last couple of years have traveled, we're away from our house, and the only water use at our property is to water our plants, yet I'm paying more in sewer charges than the time is going to allow me to continue. So I'd be glad to speak to somebody in that regard. So I would wish that you would maybe delay a decision on the water rates until more investigations can be done on something fair.
Thank you so much. What I would do is have you speak to our town manager, Brent Billingsley. We follow all of the state statutes and we definitely make sure that public is aware of what we are doing. And I appreciate you coming out tonight. And just so the taxpayers and people at home know, a lot of the charges that you see with your water in your sewer, as we've discussed before, that accounts for infrastructure and servicing, but again, Mr. Billingsley would be happy to discuss that with you, as well as Mr. Ben Bitter. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, I got some new hearing aids and in my hurry to get here, I left them at home, so.
That's okay. Mr. Bitter will definitely help you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Garrett Stubson, Stubson from Florence High School, class of 2018.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
My name is Garrett Stubson and I'm a senior at Florence High School and also a member of Student Council. And I am here with my principal, Mr. Haugen. And we were just here to thank you, Mrs. Mayor, and also the council for the generous donation for our lock-in. The lock-in is a big part of tradition at Florence High School and it allows a safe place for us as seniors to hang out for one last time before going into our personal adventures after high school. So as a senior and also member of Student Council, we are here to just thank you for the generous donation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Mr. Toby Haugen from Florence High School, principal.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, again, I just stand here on behalf of Florence High School. Just to address our appreciation, I apologize for not being able to be here at the last meeting when you guys discussed the donation. Just a little bit of background quickly, this will be our ninth annual grad night lock-in that we've had at Florence High School. It's been very, very successful for this school. And as far as I can tell, and as far as my knowledge goes, we've been very successful in creating a very safe environment for our seniors on graduation night and preventing anything that could be potentially tragic for those students to make sure that they're going on in the future to do great things. So your donation to Florence High School to make that happen is the reason it's going to happen this year. Without the town of Florence, we probably would not have been able to make that happen this year. So again, very much, I just want to say thank you and we desperately, desperately appreciate to have your gratitude. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, are there any more members of the public that would like to speak at call to the public? All right, with that, we are going to close call to the public. Item 6A, Presentations. We have a proclamation declaring Florence's pride in those who have enlisted in the military and to urge all citizens to continue to support our military service personnel and the families of those who are serving in our armed forces. So here is the proclamation. Whereas men and women join the military in part because of the benefits the military offers, but more importantly, they join the military and put their lives on the line so the rest of us might live in a safer, freer, more just world. And whereas Aliano Avendano, Vanessa Bartholomew, Canan Cantrell, Jared Glines, Sierra Grant, Francisco Gutierrez, Matthew Hall, Enrico Lindsay, Logan Mullen, Colton Stevens, Madeline Weaver, Jacob Weiner, and Tiffany Wendell have demonstrated their courage and commitment to freedom by enlisting in the armed forces. Each will take an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and is ready to stand and defend our great country with honor, courage, and commitment so that we may all enjoy the freedom afforded to each of us. Whereas our military personnel defend us in times of peace, times of war, of crisis, both natural and man-made, and render the highest service any American can offer and is the guardian of freedom in the American way of life. And whereas we are profoundly grateful for the sacrifice that they have chosen to offer each of us, and because of their heroism, we are able to sleep soundly at night knowing that they are vigilantly guarding our freedom. And whereas we must also remain committed to support our men and women who have grown up in our community and are a part of our communal family in order to ensure that they have what they need in order to complete their missions wherever they may be. We must also commit to support the families they leave behind and to support them when they return home. So now therefore, be it resolved, I Tara Walter, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim Florence's pride in those who have enlisted and urge all citizens to continue to support our military service personnel and the families of those who are serving in our armed forces. Dated the seventh day, May 2018. Thank you very much. Okay, so you guys are going to stay here. We're going to have you turn around and we are going to have you introduce yourselves to everybody and tell which branch you're going into.
Counsel, if you'd like to come down as well?
Iliano Avendano, and I'm going to the Army.
Logan Mullen, Marine Corps.
Madeline Weaver, Army.
Matthew Hall, Army.
Canan Cantrell, Marine Corps.
Francisco Gutierrez, Army.
Going into service? Thank you for going into service. Want to thank these men and women for going into service and protecting and honoring our country. Go ahead and go all the way back towards the stage so we get a little bit better pictures. You gotta squish, you're supposed to be family here.
All right, very proud of them. Item 6B is a proclamation declaring May 2018 as National Water Safety Month in the town of Florence, Arizona. Mr. Brian Hughes. Mr. Bebo, would you like me to read this?
(inaudible).
Okay. So the proclamation is for the 2018 National Water Safety Month, and then Mr. Bebo has some words to say afterwards. Whereas the citizens of the town of Florence recognize the vital role that swimming and aquatic-related activities relate to good physical and mental health and enhance the quality of life for all people. And whereas the citizens of the town of Florence understand the essential role that education regarding the topic of water safety plays in preventing drowning and water-related injuries. And whereas the town of Florence is aware of the contributions made by the recreational water industry as represented by the Association of Pool and Spa Professionals, the National Recreation and Park Association, and the World Water Park Association in developing safe swimming facilities, aquatic programs, home pools, and spas, and related activities providing healthy places to recreate, learn, and grow, build self-esteem, confidence, and a sense of self-worth, which contributes to the quality of life in our community. Whereas the citizens of the town of Florence recognize the ongoing efforts and commitments to educate the public on pool and spa safety issues and initiatives by pool, spa, water park, and recreation and parks industries. And whereas the citizens of the town of Florence understand the vital importance of communicating water safety rules and programs to families and individuals of all ages, whether they're owners of private pools, users of public swimming facilities, or visitors to water parks. Now therefore, I Tara Walter, mayor of the town of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 as National Water Safety Month. We have amazing programs, our parks and rect department would like to take a few moments to speak.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and public. Thank you guys for recognizing water safety. You know, it's important, as Dave Muncy always says, watch your kids around water. You guys remember Dave Muncy? But today, if you guys don't know me, my name is Oswald Minneville, everybody knows me as Bebo. And this is my staff right here, we have Reagan, she's a head guard, first-year head guard. She's been with us for three years. And Nick, he was a head guard last year, he's going to be our pool manager this year, this year, it's his first year as pool manager. Well, like I said, thank you for recognizing water safety. You know, this is something, you know, everybody loves this Florence Aquatic Center, you know, that we have here. It's a nice facility, beautiful facility. You know, there's a lot of work behind it, behind the scenes. We start recruiting back in December with our job fairs in January. We have a job fair in December and January just to help boost, hey, we're looking for people to work, you know, to get the summer going. We brought our staff on with the help of HR. HR's been awesome with us, you know, working with Verge and everything with HR, and they've been a great help. But just wanted to talk about a little about water safety. You know, we started our training last week and we're inviting everybody, the public, on our first day we're going to be open, which is May 26th. It's our water safety day, we started doing it the last two years, in which we promote, you know, water safety, we talk about some of our rules we have, we have demonstrations with water rescues during our safety break so the public can see what we do when we do train. So I invite the public, council, and all you guys, it's a free day, so it's a free day. Then the very next day will be our regular day in which our fees are $2 a child and $4 an adult. So if you guys would like to visit the Aquatic Center, and we're open Memorial Day also. And we also have some outside organizations, we kind of, as a family resource, we have the Diabetes Coalition will be there, Sun Life, still trying to recruit some more organizations and what they help promote healthy living and some family resources to the public. So I invite you guys, so if you guys get a chance, check out our website, everything we've got going on from lap swim to swim lessons, and our swim team, which is our outgoing marine here, Canan Cantrell, so I'd like to recognize him, and also some of our staff, Logan Mullen, who's also a lifeguard, a water safety instructor. So I would like to recognize them on their accomplishments in entering military service. So hope to see you guys out there, May 26th, public who's here. And if you have any questions, you know, get with me on the Aquatic Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys for all you do. All right, item C is an update on the Penile Regional Transportation Authority. Mr. Andy Smith, how are you this evening?
Good. Thanks. Good evening, how are you?
Good, thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you. Brent told me I had to do it in less than 10 minutes, so do you guys have any jokes or anything, because this isn't going to take that long, so.[1194.15][1194.15](laughter)
You take your time. 10 minutes, start the clock.
No, I appreciate you letting me have this opportunity to provide an update on the Regional Transportation Authority. Obviously, for those who may, this was the RTA that was adopted back in November of 2017 with a half-cent sales tax. I won't bore you with all those details because I'm sure you know them. Basically where we're at is, we have, our board of directors is set up, which is all of the cities and towns within Penile County, as well, the mayor sits on that particular board for the RTA. We have two subcommittees identified right now, a Transportation Technical Advisory Committee, which is made up of city or town engineers, public works directors, those types of folks. We have a transit subcommittee, as you'll remember, there is about a million dollars a year going towards transit, and so we need to figure out how we can divvy up that money, if you will. Based on the vote, and the way it was written in the legislation, in the vote, it was to be existing services, 5310, 5311 types of programs, and those who may not know what the 5310 are, these are the developmentally disabled senior riders who don't have transportation, so we're trying to expand those existing services as well as the transit services of like cart, dial-a-ride, Comet Express over in Maricopa. We've also identified some parking rides, and so these people are going to kind of help the subcommittee, or the subcommittee is going to help the TAC identify how to disperse those funds. Then we have actually just had last week our first Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee meeting, and your own Lottie Frost was in attendance, as was 14 of his newest best friends, as we move forward with our Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee. We're going to meet currently about every month to try and get everybody up to speed. Obviously, we have a lot of things that we need to educate them on, the process, obviously, I'll go into the lawsuit and some of that stuff here in just a second. But as you can see with this particular listing, you see who your board members are, you see who your TAC designee is, as well as your Citizens Advisory Committee. This is just kind of a swag, if you will, of the projects that we're currently working on. As you know, the TAC's only started April 1st, we don't have any funds per se, Penile County is actually funding my job, my position through a lease agreement between Penile County and the RTA Board. So if you've ever known of a leased employee, that's, you're looking at one.[1341.21][1341.21](laughter) That being said, so what we're trying to do here is to kind of identify based on the phasing of projects, where those projects, we could start doing some. And so we have the city of Casa Grande looking at doing some design of Thornton Road, Peters Road, the county is looking at Cordonas Road down around the Saddle Brook area, we've actually started working with MAG to do what they call a design concept report for State Route 347. So some things have started to kind of move and gel, but obviously, we're kind of taking some baby steps until we can figure out exactly where we stand on this lawsuit. And to that end, as of March 19th, Goldwater Institute filed their lawsuit against the Penile County Regional Transportation Authority and the Board of Supervisors. There was a preliminary injunction that was set and was heard by the judge on the 23rd, and where it was supposed to just be a hearing of, say, 15 to 20 minutes of, this is the schedule, as we're going forward. And in this particular hearing was the Home Builders of Central Arizona, as well as the Goldwater Institute, and the attorneys for the county, the RTA, county attorney, Board of Supervisors, there was three, the RTA, the Board of Supervisors, and CAG, Central Arizona Governments, I apologize. And at that particular hearing, it ended up going on for about 45 minutes to an hour, where the actual, the judge denied the preliminary injunction, which now lets us go for April 1st, they started to collect the tax. The Department of Revenue for the state of Arizona is generally about two months in arrears, so in theory, we really won't see any money until June of this year. In April 12th, the motion by the Goldwater Institute was to say, provide us a declaratory judgment. There has not been one as of date, but shortly after that April 12th date, the Home Builders of Central Arizona pulled out of the, with no, there's a term they use, help me out here Brent, no prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, so that they could come back later if they wanted to, depending on where it was. But right now, they basically have pulled out of the lawsuit. So we're still back to just having the Goldwater Institute. Both sides are supposed to have their information to the judge by May 21st, and we're hoping by rendering a decision by the middle to latter part of June, first part of July, going So monies are being counted April 1st, they're being held in an escrow account, as I said, the two months in arrears. We are currently working with the Board, the Regional Transportation Authority Board, we are providing, a couple of months ago, we have our bond counsel come to present to the Board to kind of say, based on the forecasted revenues for the next 20 years, this is the kind of bonding, and these are some of the ways we could go about bonding projects to try and expedite them. So you basically sell bonds so that you can build the infrastructure faster. The theory is, is that we want to make sure we can build that bank account up, if you will, by, within 24 months. And so we're looking at intergovernmental agreements as to how the IGAs would be worked between whoever the project manager is of that particular facility and the RTA. And so we're looking at that, we're looking at some reimbursement resolutions. Then just last month, we had the, there was a gentleman by the name of Peter Laughlin, who is a federal lobbyist, who actually worked on the South Mountain particular corridor, and he was instrumental in getting that forward. And so we've kind of looked at some construction management at risk type of alternative funding sources, P3s. We're going to be looking at tolls. I don't see a whole lot of positive with the tolls based on some previous studies that have been done, they only get about 55 to 60% reimbursement, if you will, on a toll. So it's, the public isn't really geared towards doing tolls. And so we're still having lots of meetings, and I'm really, I'm here to answer any questions you may have, I'm willing to come back at a later date. I still would like to sit down with Mayor Walter at some point, just to kind of have a little one-on-one with you.
Yep.
It's all good, though.[1595.11][1595.11](laughter)
I know our schedules have been a little, for that one-on-one, but we can definitely schedule.
Great.
Any members of council have specific questions regarding Ms. Wall?
I know that there is a lawsuit, but can you kind of give us the gist of what the claim by the Goldwater Institute is?
As I understand it, the Goldwater Institute believes that the tax is unconstitutional in the way that it was relayed to the Penile County voters. And we have not done anything to deviate from that, and in fact, I think that the way that the statute is written, it's really the same tax that is being utilized in Maricopa County and is being used in Pima County. The only caveat is, is that a county hasn't necessarily done it, it's been cities and towns.
Thank you. Is this presentation available on your website?
You have it.
Well, I have a small version of the map, that's what I was hoping.
Oh, yes, Penile, if you go to that, penilrta.org, there's all kinds of, there's press releases, there's contact information, there's maps, there's the voter pamphlet, there's a lot of stuff on that particular website.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hawkins? All right. I appreciate you coming out this evening. Let's get together and I will call you tomorrow.
I will follow up with you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, item number D is recognition of Nikolai Zwecker, administrative intern for his service to the town of Florence. Nikolai, how are you this evening? Good. Mr. Billingsley?
Madam Mayor, I love Andy Smith to death, and we've worked together for many years, but if you don't give him a timeline to give a presentation, he'll do a stand-up routine for 30 minutes. So I saved you from a really bad stand-up routine. He did a fine job presenting the information on the RTA, we're in good shape having Andy lead that effort. It's with sorrow and gratitude, I'm here to talk about Mr. Zwecker. I think many of you know the story, but he contacted me and said, hey, I'd like you to consider bringing me on as an intern in Florence. And I was very excited. The process was a pain in the rear end to get him here, but it was very much worth it. We couldn't have gotten an intern who was harderworking, more intelligent, more respectful, and more caring to our residents than Nikolai. He has been an asset to the town, he has been an asset to the council, he's been an asset to the staff, and has come in every day and given his best in a very respectful and professional way, and we're going to miss him. I'm going to miss him personally because he's also, has become a friend, and he's a Class A individual. So hopefully, when he goes back to the University of Keel, he has a lot of... he has a lot of nice things to say about Florence, and hopefully, he's not a stranger. So we've gotten him something. And anybody who knows me knows I'm pretty competitive and I don't like to be upstaged. And our last intern got this really huge plaque. So I don't want to let Parks and Recreation beat me. So we've got something for Nikolai that I think he's going to really appreciate. In case you don't know, Nikolai, he has two passions in this life. One of them is his family, and the second, and probably first, is fishing. And he is a very passionate fisherman. Before he came to the United States, he said, I just want to make sure that when I'm there, somebody helps me go fishing. Second thing was, I want to go to Bass Pro Shop. So we were able to accomplish both of those goals, but check this out. It is the world's largest fishing lure. The other thing that is really important to know is he loves Rapala, which is a Finnish company that makes fishing lures. The chief and I happened to have taken Nikolai to Bass Pro Shop, and I tried to explain to Nikolai the lures that the fish hit in Arizona. And at one point, he told me if it's not Rapala, I'm not buying it. So with great pleasure, I want to read to you the plaque on this and I want to provide this huge lure to Nikolai. The thought process was, we wanted to have something that he would never get rid of, that he would always display in his office, that would be, have Florence very prominently on it. So I'll always have some oceanfront property in Florence, Arizona. Nikolai Zwecker, Town Manager's Office Intern, February through May 2018. If you'd give me, join me in a round of applause for Nikolai.
You catch a shark with that thing?
I had speech.
Okay, so I prepared some words here. But at first, I mean, thanks, thank you for this awesome gift. I'm actually overwhelmed. They have such a big lure in the fishing store I used to buy my stuff. I always thought about like, where do they get this stuff? And is it like really for fishing? And I can't believe that I'm now, that I've now, yeah, one. So that's really cool, actually. Yeah. I want to thank Brent and the Town Council for having me actually in Florence. It was a pleasure for me to spend these three months here in Florence. And thankful that you gave me the opportunity to do my internship here. Furthermore, I want to thank actually all the employees and department heads I worked with. For example, Brent, it was my first station at the administration, right? Then I want to thank Joe, sadly, he's not here today. I spent about two and a half weeks at the financial department. I want to thank Jennifer. I also spent, she was also responsible for me. Scott, thank you too. And now I'm actually in the legal department with Cliff. So thanks for that. And actually, thank you for all the other employees. I think I talked to nearly everyone who is here right now. So it was a pleasure for me to work with you and you were so nice. So I always had like a good time here and I just wanted to say thanks. So some projects I've finished with my time here with Florence. I always copied your council agenda package while I was here. I updated the fee schedule with Ben, but sadly, it's like a long process, so we couldn't finish that. I did some research for the budget award because Joe wants to win the budget award I think next year. So I did some research and that. I helped Scott drafting a new harassment policy. And actually, the last project I'm working on right now is on the presentation I'm giving on Thursday at the senior center 10 o'clock. So you're all invited and I'm talking to them about me, where I come from, what I've done here. So 10 o'clock at the senior center Thursday. Little advertisement. So another things I did here in my free time or my holidays was, I went to a gun show with Brent and the chief actually, which was a really, that was an experience because I've never seen that many guns on, yeah, in one hall like that. So I would think I will keep this far in mind. But it was nice and I think it's a pretty, yeah, just a pretty important part of your culture because always also the first weekend here, I went out shooting. So I think that's a big thing here and I'm glad that I've got the experience there. I also went to the car show here in town with Brian. Yeah, seen some nice cars here. I went, I was actually fishing with John Anderson and Brent stopped there. We had an amazing time because a lot of fish. And I got probably the worst sunburn on my face I've ever had. I was like red like a lobster, so but we had an awesome day. Yeah, so last week, I made a road trip with a friend of mine. He was, or he is doing an internship in Mexico. So he flew over to Arizona for five days and we drive to the Grand Canyon, to the Bryce Canyon, and spent two nights in Las Vegas. So that was a nice experience too and I'm glad that I got some off time to do this. And yeah, and I celebrated actually Easter with Brent's family and glaub, which was a nice experience too. So there was like a small overview of what I've done here. And another big thank you is actually to these two guys like representing the family of my roommate Stevie. So it was the perfect situation for me to come here because these guys like Maria and Cass, for example, but they stay like for the whole family. Yeah, they are so awesome people, so friendly, they are so, they have so big heart and they treat me like I've been like a part of the family right away when I arrived here. I ate some awesome Mexican food. So I had an awesome time with these guys and I'm glad that I've met you and stayed with Stevie. So I just wanted to say thank you, so that you know. Okay. Yeah, all in all, I can say that I had a great time here in Florence. I enjoyed like every minute here. And I just can't say thank you even though I've not mentioned someone or something. I'm just, thank you. And I know that there's some people in Germany watching the live stream. So I want to say some greetings to them too. Hello, Mama, hello, Papa. Geschwülle, dass Sie aufgestanden, ja, aufgeraucht seid jetzt. Danke, dass ihr mich da immer unterstützt habt hier und ja, ich habe euch lieb und komm bald heim. Thanks.
Congratulations, and we're going to mail it for you to Germany so that you don't have to pay extra to take it back with you on the plane. So if you get it back to me, we'll mail it to you.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, so Mr. Billingsley and Mr. Nikolai, we have, we have one more favor that we need. Nikolai has one more wish while he's here. And Nikolai, you're here until Saturday, right? Sunday?
Next, Thursday, right.
So next Thursday, so you're here through the weekend, right? What date is that? Help me.
Well, the 13th, I believe, isn't Mother's Day Sunday?
Yeah, it's 13th.
So you're here until the 13th is Mother's Day?
Right, it's Sunday.
So you're here that following Thursday, so like the 17th?
17th, right, that's my last day. Yeah, right.
Okay, awesome. I'm going to get in touch with you. Nikolai wants to go see a Diamondbacks game. So we're going to put some dates together. And if anybody on council wants to go, any of staff wants to go, we'll just get a big ticket, okay?
That sounds awesome.
We need to make this happen.
Wow, perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, man. Yeah, awesome.
So next Thursday. All right. Consent agenda. Item B, I'm just going to make a statement regarding, this is just for information purposes. It's not necessarily the adoption, it's just the way that it was presented. So Mr. Salis, would you like me to take that off and make it separate or keep it under consent? Okay, we'll take it off and make it separate. So we're going to go ahead. Consent agenda is all items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda. Unless a council member or a member of the public objects to the time, the agenda item is called. Item A is authorization to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Winkleman for Community Development Block Grant, CDGB, funds by Ms. Jennifer Evans, and approval of accepting the registered demands ending March 31st, 2018, in the amount of $1,737,641.89. With that, I need a motion.
I'd like to have item A pulled off.
Okay, removal of item A and item B. With that, we need a motion for C.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item A and B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and a motion carries.
A question on item A is, what's that money used for earmarked in our budget?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Anderson, the CDBG funds, the regional account, which we are about to apply for, come around every two years. And the current CDBG grant that we have will be used for waterline improvement, improvements in the town core area. For this upcoming grant application, we will have two public hearings and to solicit ideas for projects from the public. The first public hearing will be May 24th, and then the second hearing will be at the Town Council meeting on June 18th. And after that time, the council will determine what project that we'll apply for using these funds.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I make a motion that we approve item, what was it, A?
Yes.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, item B, Mr. Chris Salis.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Item B, a little bit of history on item B. Our code enforcement manual is not any changes to our existing ordinance. We're not changing the way that we apply the ordinance. There's no amendments to the ordinance. The purpose of the manual is, again, is to have a tool which we reach out to residents and we're able to have a conversation with them and explain to them the process. It's just a layman's approach to how we handle code enforcement. There's nothing changing about the actual ordinance. There's not going to be any increased or decreased amount of code enforcement. That's not changing, none of the actual ordinance is changing. Again, this just allows us to sit down with a person at our front counter and explain to them the process and maybe what they would expect and just the formalities of it. Again, it's just something that's come up at the very beginning. I know I sat amongst my peers and yourselves at the strategic planning meeting, and one of the things that was discussed was communication. And I kind of keep wanting to bring up that level of communication. We've held meetings as of last week. We had our first Building Safety Monthly Meeting on our entire process. And this is very similar. This is just a tool that we use to reach out and have discussion with the residents. And it gives them a kind of a platform and a level of understanding of what is all involved in code enforcement.
Mr. Billingsley?
Just to reaffirm, item's not on the agenda tonight for adoption or for a vote. It's for public information, for council information only. It's an internal document among staff. We've had, it's been discussed at multiple public meetings, including a work session with both the HDAC and the Planning and Zoning Commission to complete the document. So it's had quite a bit of outreach and we're just looking forward to moving forward and implementing.
All right, thank you very much. With that, we need a motion.
Well, there's no motion.
Well, it's for information only, so it's not technically a motion. It's just because we removed it, it's fine.
I'd like to make some point here. Mr. Rayford, apparently, maybe, I don't know, maybe he was out of town when we had the work session with the HDAC and everybody. My understanding was, you know, everybody's had input, put in on it previously, but is Mr. Rayford on the, I don't think he's on the historic, okay.
No, sir.
Well, I don't know, maybe he needs to come back and we can give him that information. But I see he's left already, but, but I just wanted to make the point that we, you know, because he said that he had issues with it and that we should get with the historic people. And I think we already did that, but I just want people to know.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Hawkins, Councilmember Hawkins, the information, the book itself has been out and publicly available for review and comment. If I remember right, Mr. Rayford came in and reviewed it and provided us with comments. Lisa, is that right, after we had the public hearing?
He wasn't.
So he came in, he provided some comments. Ben went and spoke with him after the meeting today. We'd be glad either Ben or Chris to sit down with him and, once again, inform him what the document is about. I believe his primary concerns, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, is he owns a historic property and he wants to make sure that, he believes that historic properties may not be in as good a condition as other development around the town. He wants to make sure that we're not singling out people that have historic properties specifically for code enforcement, and that's not the intent.
Okay, well, that's, I was just wanting to make sure everybody realizes that we've, I think we've done everything we can to inform everybody that's interested. That's it, that's all I had to say. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. All right, item 8A is new business. This is, Mr. Scott Barber is coming up for the staff recommendation of the fiscal year 2018-19 Employee Benefit Program with United Healthcare of Arizona for medical, dental, life, and vision insurance, Teladoc for 24/7 physician access benefits, Jorgensen Brooks Group for Employee Assistance Program, Aflac for supplemental insurance project, products, and Infineosource to administer our Section 125 flexible benefit account plan.
Mayor Walter, members of the council, this is our annual visit to you to have you consider formal adoption of our employee benefit plan for the upcoming fiscal year. And as the request for council action gives you the details, we are recommending a renewal of our health, life, dental, and vision package with UHC, or United Healthcare of Arizona. And all of the other ancillary coverages would remain the same. It's an interesting renewal process every year, but this year particularly, there was a lot of back and forth. And as a matter of fact, there's two adjustments I need to make, figures that are in the request for council action because I was up against a deadline on Thursday trying to pull this information together while there was still back and forth going on. And so on the first page of the request for council action, it says the UHC increase is 4.99%, it's actually 4.95%. So when I got the actual numbers, I was able to do that. And then on the second page, we left it, put a table in there so you get an idea of what our employees share of the benefit costs are. And the matrix shows what our what our employees share of the benefit costs are, and the matrix shows what our current plan is and what the renewal is. So there's actually, I provided you a unupdated copy, for the employee and spouse coverage, it was off by 14 cents, minus 14 cents, minus five on employee and children, and then plus $2.79 on the, on the family coverage. So those are the adjustments that I needed to make this evening in the interest of full disclosure, and we're providing that information in correct form to our employees. I guess trying to hit the highlights, United Healthcare has been our carrier for the last two years, and the information that comes and flows back and forth during the renewal process, there'd be initial bid, and then, and then the carriers will come back and forth and back and forth, and so we, we struggle to get the final and best offer, but we have that. And so, UHC is offering a renewal that will include a new $25 copay for our employees in basic lab and x-ray charges. So that's new and different than what we have now. But behind that, they're also offering a new prescription drug list that's, provides some, some, some significant enhancements for our employees as they deal with the prescription drug list. So this giveth and taketh away, and the one thing I've learned over the course of time, when it comes to benefit programs, it's very difficult to do comparisons of apples and apples. So, the other feature that they're providing for us is if we have a really smoking great year, we have a chance to get some premium back. That's just simply a notation in passing, because that's a, that's a pie in the sky that we, we certainly hope. And the other thing is, in a dental program, we're making a change, we have a reimbursement schedule in our current plan that reimburses providers at what's called the MAC rate, and there've been some concerns expressed by our employees that subject them to the possibility of more balanced billing, if the insurance company already pays so much, very often the provider's looking to the employee to pay that. What we're doing is moving to a program that provides what is more normal, that is, payment of reasonable and customary charges to the 80th percentile, that's kind of the norm, and so we're reducing the possibility of being, of our employees being balanced billed in the dental program. Obviously, the real dollars are on the medical side, but we paying attention to the other things as well. And on the dental program, one other kinds, there's this also little obscure feature, that if you get your teeth cleaned once a year and you haven't reached the maximum benefit, then you get a bonus, and it's credited to you from year to year. So, we have employees with about $63,000 worth of, of credits on the books, if you will, and it's, it's only going to come to play, yes, if you have a crown or something like that, so that it's added to the maximum benefit that the, that the policy will pay in the, in the year. So just kind of obscure, but nonetheless, it contributed to our trying to figure out what's the best decision for the most. I would totally be remiss if I didn't tell you that I'm quite proud, and I think you should be too, of the benefit plan that we offer our employees, it's a very, very good benefit plan. And secondly, to the, the percentage that we share for those employees that need and want dependent coverage is also very, very good. For those employees that need and want dependent coverage, we pay 78%, and employees pay 22% of that coverage. And so, it's been our goal as staff to try to maintain our benefit structure and our cost showing arrangement to the best we can, and that's the proposal that's being brought to you tonight. The overall dollar-to-dollar increase is about 5.25% when you consider the increases in, in the health insurance and dental. We should take some comfort in knowing that we could be facing the realities of a couple of our neighbors, our, our agent broker representative, Eric Johnson, he also serves as, in that capacity with a couple of our neighboring cities, and they are, they're very envious, they may not say so, but they're very envious of our position, because their renewal situation is, is way different than ours. And so, in spite of the fact that this is, again, overall about a 5.25% increase, it's very, very positive in relationship to some other things that are going on out there. So I provided that information to you, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, it is key, we, our employee newsletter on Friday that went out with paychecks, we gave some additional information to our employees, we have our renewal meetings that are already scheduled, and we try to encourage our employees to come there, because we have not only representation with, on our Health, Life, Dental and Vision, but also some of the other coverages as well, and those have already been scheduled, and so we'll be moving forward 100% with your approval this evening, but I'll stand to answer any questions you might have.
Any members of council have any questions?
No, I'd just like to have a comment, because we were in our budget meeting Thursday when Scott was negotiating, and when I get ready to buy another vehicle, I know who I'm gonna take with me.
I wish I could take the, Councilman Anderson, I wish I could take the credit for that, but I'm, but Eric Johnson, Gary L. Johnson Associates does such a great job for us, I can't say enough about he and his staff, who also help our employees every day with problems that they have with their insurance, and so they're, they're toms.
Mr. Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I sound like a broken record, this is the third budget I've been involved with here in Florence, and, and the previous two, I've said something very similar. Thank you very much to Gary Johnson Associates for their fine job, thank you very much to Mr. Barber for his hard work. When we started this process three months ago, it was 17% that we were looking at in terms of increase to our benefits plan, and to be honest with you, it's been kind of a pain in the butt the last week, because every day, things were changing, and deals were being struck, and it, it was really a pain to try and make some decisions, and in the middle of last week, the decisions were gonna be difficult to make, but it all came together, as it has the previous two years, and we're very much in a fortuitous position and being able to move forward, and we couldn't do it without those folks that I thanked. Secondarily, for all of the town employees in the audience and watching on TV this evening, I'm also proud to say that we listen to our employees. The two main complaints that we've received over the last year, and I was one of the complainers, by the way, was the prescription benefit plan and dental. And we went in with a goal upfront this year of making some changes to the benefit of our employees with respect to those two things, and, and I'm confident that we've been able to do that. So with that, I'll be quiet.
Well, Mr. Barber, thank you for all of your hard work and efforts, and also communicating any, you know, misunderstandings that we may have had prior. You've done a very, very good job, I like how you listened to the employees, you shared that a few other employees had come forward, shared some things, and one of the benefits that you were able to get in at no cost to the town was the tinting on glasses. So, you know, if you're an employee and you have a concern, talk to HR, they're there to support you, and you guys did a great job on this, thank you, and thank you for the Budget Committee for listening and working with them during this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, item number 10 is our department reports.
I'll make a...
Need to make a motion.
Ha, I need a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve fiscal year 2018-2019 Employee Benefit Program with United Healthcare of Arizona for Medical, Dental, Life and Vision Insurance, Teladoc for 24/7 Physician Access Benefits, Jorgensen-Brooks Group for Employee Assistance Program, and Aflac for Supplemental Insurance Products, and Infinite Source to administer our Section 125 Flexible Benefit Account Plan.
A second?
Motion and... Motion in multiple seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. I do have one more item before the manager's report. Item 8B, which is the discussion approval and disapproval of setting a date for a work session with the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. If this date works with council, Ms. Garcia shared right before, June 4th, having the work session from 5:00 to 6:00, which is right before our regularly scheduled council meeting.
Is it?
June 4th?
June, not July, okay.
No, not July, that is my, that's my anniversary bill.
Oh.
Alright, it looks like June 4th will work, so we'll go ahead and set that up. At 5:00 PM, and then we'll start our regularly scheduled meeting at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Alright, do we need to vote on that, Ms. Garcia?
No.
You can.
Alright, we need a motion.
Make a motion to have a work session with the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce on June the 4th, from 5:00 to 6:00.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. It was just noted that way, so I figured go for it. Item nine, manager's report.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm gonna have to take my glasses off and on here. I've got several items tonight, some of them have exceptionally small text. The first, I would, I'm proud to say that one of our newer employees, Mr. Cody Curtis, who works in development services, has achieved, took the test and has achieved his residential building inspector certification, so that's, that's wonderful for Cody. Secondarily, last week was the Arizona Water Association Conference, I believe it was in Prescott, where was it at, Chris? Not important. But our senior operator at our plant, Jason Joines, our wastewater superintendent, was part of the team that won the top ops competition, which is like a quiz bowl for wastewater plant operations, so it was a three-member team, and they won first place. So next time you see Jason, tell him congratulations. The next item I have is Erasmo Mendeville Bebo, who was here earlier, has achieved his NRPA AFO certification for aquatic facility operations. So, we now have a certified aquatic facility operator, which is great. And lastly, one of our management team has achieved his certified public manager certification, and that is Mr. Hughes. So, one of the, I'm proud to talk about all this, because one of the things that council asked us to do as part of the strategic planning effort is to make sure that we're continuing education with our folks, and that we're making sure that they have the registrations and certifications that are necessary to prove to the public that we're qualified to do our job. The second thing that I have is that we are going to get a dividend from our insurer based on good performance, so we're gonna get a dividend of 50, essentially $51,000 this year, money back. So, yay to us. That's the board that Scott served on for many years, AMR RP. Lastly, I'm happy to present to the public and to the entire council that the Budget Committee has finished review of the tentative budget, the initial budget document. It's been a lot of hard work, it's been a lot of hours spent, it has been exceptionally hot in that room with plastic seats, but we've been meeting twice a week for several weeks and working it out. So, thank you very much to Councilmember Wall, Councilwoman Larson, and Councilman Anderson for your, for your hard work, as well as Joe Jarvis, Lisa Garcia, and everyone else who has participated in that process. Individual council members will be, being reached out to from staff in the next week, and we're gonna pick some dates for budget reviews in front of council, so those are forthcoming. So thank you very much to, to the Budget Committee and, and to the staff that's worked so hard on the budget, I left out the department directors that have also worked very hard on that budget, so thank you to everyone involved, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you very much. Department head reports, is there any member of council that has any questions for them? Councilmember Wall?
I just have a question for Brian, and it kinda goes hand in hand with the Budget Committee stuff. At the very end of the narrative of the April report, there's a paragraph about Westland Resources, one of the town's on-call engineering consultants selected to perform an EA on the two Bureau of Land Management parcels that the town is currently applying for to expand the Postonbutte Preserve. The EA is the next step in the application process and is expected to take up to nine months. Where are the funds for that?
The council member, the ma, the funds are budgeted under the CIP, under Postonbutte, so there was $39,000 budgeted there, and so, this is, a portion of that will come out of this fiscal year, and because it will take a little bit longer, a portion will come out of next year, which we have $195,000 budgeted.
Okay, so it does span the two budget years?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of council? Alright, with that, we have call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Anderson?
Well, I would like to, I'd like to thank the Budget Committee for their hard work, also, I'd like to thank the staff for their contribution and cooperation. It was a, sort of a long tedious thing that we had, had to go through, it's always very educational, and again, my appreciation to Karen and Kristen for their help.
Thank you.
Councilmember Galen?
I don't have anything tonight.
Vice Mayor Woolridge?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Yeah, I'd also like, like John, I'd like to thank everybody on the Budget Committee, staff and council members, they, I did witness putting in a lot of time, they did, that's no joke, they, they worked very hard at it, and I think did an excellent job, I think, from what I understand, we're gonna have a, another good year, it's with our funds that we have to work with, that's all I have.
Councilmember Wall?
Well, I would just like to recognize our public service employees, which means all of our, our town staff. This happens to be Public Service Recognition Week that was proclaimed by our US Congress, and I just wanna thank our entire group of wonderful employees for their hard work and their contributions to our well-being, thank you.
Councilmember Larson?
Well, thank you for informing me, Karen, about that, I also wanna echo the same sentiments, we appreciate all the hard work that you guys do. I also wanna thank the Budget Committee for, and staff for dealing with me, 'cause I can be a little bullheaded and a nitpicky, and I recognize that, so I just wanna say thank you for dealing with me through those rigorous hours, so I appreciate it, and I look forward to everyone else getting a chance to review the budget and having their input as well, it's not just my picking, and that's all I have for tonight.
Alright, I don't have anything this evening, so with that, I'd like a motion.
Make a motion, and we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.